Good.
Great. Thank you, Sharon. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Na Kwong with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Please note that this online public hearing is being recorded. Before we begin the hearing, I want to share a few logistics on the Zoom meeting features and how this meeting will run. To minimize background noise, currently, all attendees in this meeting are on mute. However, there will be an opportunity to provide oral testimony. If you have joined online, please enter your name and affiliation in the chat box located in the chat bar of the Zoom control panel on your computer or at the top right of your mobile device by clicking the chat bubble icon. If you would like to testify, type testify after your name. If you're having trouble finding the chat box on your computer, try clicking on the more icon to see additional controls. The chat function should only be used to provide your name and indicate you wish to testify. The chat is not to be used to provide written testimony. Information on where to send written comments will be provided during this testimony. Hearing. If you're on the phone, we will unmute callers one at a time to ask for this information and provide an opportunity for testimony. Now we will begin the hearing. This is a public hearing held by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. My name is Na Kwong, and I'm the hearing officer on this matter. With me on the hearing panel today are Hady Janik and Sharon Weber, and Amy Kalina will be calling on those who indicate they wish to testify. We are here today at 1:00 PM on December 9, 2024, on an online public teleconference to accept testimony on emergency amendments to Massachusetts Regulation 310 CMR 7.40 Low-Emission Vehicle Program. These amendments were adopted as emergency regulations on November 4, 2024, under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A. Emergency regulations became effective upon filing. However, within three months, the agency must complete a public review process. Therefore, on November 4, 2024, Mass DEP issued a notice of public hearing on the emergency regulations that incorporate regulations promulgated by the California Air Resources Board for the Heavy Duty Omnibus Model Year 2026 Legacy Engine Provisions, clarify exemptions for transit buses, emergency vehicles, and military tactical vehicles, and delay the Heavy Duty Omnibus effective model year from model year 2025 to 2026. The purpose of this hearing is to solicit comments on the emergency regulations. If anyone wants to provide comments on these regulations prior to the end of the public comment period and needs interpreter services, Mass DEP provides language access interpreter translation services to limited English proficient individuals free of charge. Information about these interpreter translation services is available on Mass DEP webpage. Notice of this hearing was published in the Boston Globe and the Worcester Telegram and Gazette on November 4, 2024. Notice was also emailed to interested parties and other stakeholders. The amendment's background information and public notice were made available on Mass DEP's website Testimony may be presented orally at this hearing today. We will accept written testimony until 5:00 PM on Thursday, December 19, 2024. This is a date and the time by which any written comment must be received by Mass DEP. It is not a postmarked date. Please submit written testimony electronically to me Or if you wish to submit written testimony on paper, please mail it to Na Kwong, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Bureau of Air and Waste, 100 Cambridge Street, Suite 900, Boston, Massachusetts 02114. Comments sent to any other email or address may not be received in time to be included in the official docket. In a moment, we will begin to unmute online participants who have indicated they wish to provide oral testimony. Once all online participants who have indicated they wish to testify have done so, we will call on the phone participate participants who wish to testify to identify themselves and ask them to present their oral testimony. To ensure all those who wish to testify are able, we ask participants to limit oral testimony to three minutes. At this time, I would like to ask Amy how many have indicated they would like to testify?
So right now, we do have some people still typing and commenting their names. We're over 20 at this point, so I would say that we need to keep these limited to about three minutes.
Okay, great. Thanks so much, Amy. So I guess you can now start unmuting and start calling a participant to testify.
Okay, so we're gonna pretty much go in order how people have written their names down in the chat. We are going to start with a few elected officials first. So Ruth Ann Fuller, if you don't mind going first, if you could please state your name, any affiliation you have, and then you can begin your testimony.
Hi, everybody. I'm Ruth Ann Fuller, mayor here right next door in the city of Newton. Let me start off by saying a huge thanks to everybody at the Mass DEP. It is critically important that you are thinking deeply about how to improve air quality and everything about the heavy duty omnibus and advanced clean truck regulations because they are so integrated into this critically important goal. And all of this is a really big deal, so thank you for your work. I'll also preface my comments by saying I really do understand that Massachusetts does have severe limitations in our ability to make adjustments because we're dependent on the California regulations. That said, let me explain why I'm so deeply concerned about the current timeline for implementation of the regulations. I'll expand a bit more, but it's the mix of the high costs, limited availability of the trucks, and the delays, the very real delays we have with Eversource on the electrical grid that I am genuinely concerned that with the current timelines, the regulations are actually likely to backfire. We're going to have ongoing air pollution issues, not less. Let me tell you a little bit more about Newton. The good news is we've been, I think, real leaders in electrifying our fleet. We were one of the first to convert our municipal sedan fleet over to fully electric. I did this, we did this over five years ago, and how did it happen? We started with pilot program so that we could find the right vehicles and work with Eversource to build the charging infrastructure. And there were numerous, both federal and state, financial incentives in place that we could access easily. And the other thing is the costs were dropping of the electrical vehicles, not completely in line with our gasoline alternatives, but pretty close. So that really worked, and we're fully converted. Unfortunately, to all our dismay, these conditions aren't in place with the heavy duty trucks. The required infrastructure for charging them is not viable at this time. It's the combination of cost and the unfortunate fact that the current electrical grid can't support us here in Newton for the charging. The proposed delay of the HDO unit model to 2026 is helpful but insufficient. And the wonderful announcement that you were going to, at your discretion on the ACT side of it, car out snow removal and street sweeping is also helpful but insufficient. I didn't understand this when I first became mayor, but our DPW is a true first responder. Our trucks respond, our DPW trucks respond when a water main bursts. Our DPW trucks respond when a traffic accident knocks down a traffic signal. Our DPW trucks respond when they have to sand the road as they did last night as a fire envelops a home and it's snowy or frozen conditions. So we've got the plan in place to convert our fleet to low emission and zero emission vehicles, but we can't do it now. Two reasons. Eversource, we've been working closely with them for years. They don't have the speed or the ability to make the necessary grid and distribution infrastructure upgrades that for us to switch over the medium and heavy duty fleet. Second, I'm gonna give you hard costs. We can't pay for it. The cost for medium and heavy duty ZEVs are essentially double the cost of the current clean diesel vehicles. Here's two examples. So we spend about $2.5 million annually on new vehicles. We just bought a sweeper for $260,000. The ZEV came in at $600,000, plus it wasn't available. We just bought a Packer truck for $500,000. The equivalent ZEV was just over $1 million. And again, they didn't say that they could actually deliver it. Plus, there's no incentive programs. So my strong ask is to implement HDA and ACT but two model years from now. We hope the prices will fall, Eversource will get their acting gear. You guys can work with the state to have these vehicles in the state contract. Doing it now means we won't buy them. We're gonna keep the dirtier, older vehicles on the road longer. And we'll actually, it's gonna backfire. So give us that extra model year, I guess it's two years. And I appreciate your willingness to let me testify. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much.
I'm gonna have to call you back. I'm sorry. I thought it was an emergency. Sorry.
All right, everyone. Thank you very much. Next, we just have one other elected official on the board. I know that the town of Newton has a board that would like to speak, a panel that would like to speak. We're just gonna have this other elected official go first, and then we will jump right back into the board from Newton. So next, if we don't mind, we are going to have Tricia Yakavon Biagi testify. If you could please state your name and your affiliation, then you may begin. Amy, can you tell if she's been unmuted?
I am trying to find her on the list of participants. But I do not believe she's unmuted.
Okay, there's a possibility she's having some technical difficulty. So why don't we then jump into the rest of the panel from Newton? So it looks like Adrian Nunez, if you would like to state your name and testify, that would be fantastic.
Sure. Thank you so much. So we are actually a panel from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. We are an association of municipalities. So I'm joined today by six municipal officials. The wonderful Mayor Fuller was a part of our panel. Thank you so much, Mayor Fuller, for kicking things off. You may hear some common themes in the comments that I will make, and then we'll pass it on to representatives from these communities. So as I mentioned, we are all here representing every city and town across the Commonwealth, all 351. We are incredibly appreciative to the DEP for the opportunity to weigh in today. And we are deeply appreciative for the strong relationship that the MMA and the DEP have. Of course, a strong partnership with cities and towns is essential to the success of the bulk of the initiatives that DEP oversees. And the low emission vehicle program, in particular, the heavy duty omnibus and advanced clean truck rules are no exception to that. We appreciate the department's willingness to consider the many, many implications of these policies on the end users and your willingness to make some bold moves to ensure that these policies are successful. So as you know, the proposed amendments before you today are adopting California's Heavy Duty Omnibus Model Year 2026 Legacy Engine Provisions, clarifying some exemptions, and delaying the Heavy Duty Omnibus effective by one model year. Regarding the adoption of the legacy engine provisions, these are intended to help to ensure that certain engines are still being produced for various truck categories. We very much appreciate this amendment and support any actions that can be taken to ensure that all categories of affected vehicles continue to be accessible. We also very much appreciate the amendment's clarification on exemptions for the wide variety of vehicles that are exempt. These edits help to ensure that this policy is understood. We also appreciate the adaptation to ensure that transit buses are exempt here in Massachusetts. However, as we heard earlier, regarding the emergency vehicle exemptions, these Massachusetts amendments lack the proper adaptation to our state's unique conditions. And in particular, missing from these exemptions is the role of the Department of Public Works and associated private sector partners specifically for emergency response. We strongly encourage you to include DPW vehicles to the list of exempt emergency vehicles in addition to everyday and seasonal essential services that our DPWs are providing. Our DPWs are among the first to respond to numerous emergency situations. We are further concerned with the omission of vehicles that may be needed to ensure the safe transmission and distribution of electricity. As we accelerate towards the Commonwealth's clean energy future, it is absolutely essential that these vehicles are available to meet the needs that will arise along the way and are critical to ensuring the success, again, of these policies. Such vehicles are not isolated to electric distribution companies, cities and towns, municipal light plants, our private sector partners. All need to know that they are going to be able to get the vehicles that they need to get the job done. In regards to the delay of the Heavy Duty Omnibus effective model year from 2025 to 2026, we applaud the department's wise move to delay the implementation of this rule, given the lack of the EPA waiver to enforce this rule. That said, we are very concerned that a one-year delay is going to bring little to no benefit to ensure the availability of affected vehicles within the Commonwealth, especially in conjunction with the advanced clean truck regulation. We strongly urge the department to further delay the implementation of the HDO as well as the ACT by at least two years. This additional time is going to allow all of us to budget for these vehicles on the local level and improve the available technology that's available to everyone and ensure public investments are made responsibly in vehicles that are able to do the jobs that we need them to do. As well, this will give us additional time for the necessary strategic electric infrastructure to be developed to ensure the success of the program. Just briefly, Adrian.
Real quick, I just want to give you a 15-second warning.
Okay, great. All round things off before passing the mic. I want to emphasize that our counterparts in California have reported that cities and towns are not able to access the vehicles that they need, and therefore, dirtier vehicles are staying on the roads longer. And this result really brings into question the Commonwealth's authority to amend these regulations, given the evidence that the results will not achieve a greater reduction in pollution here greater than the national standard. So we encourage you to, you know, continue what you're doing in terms of thinking through all the implications of these policies. And we further encourage you to work together across departments to ensure that these policies are a success. The MMA will submit written testimony, but for now, I will yield to our first speaker, who is Chris Cronin, DPW Director in Andover and also the Massachusetts Highway Association Board Member.
Awesome. So I just want to do a friendly reminder of the three minutes that we have. And I know that that was my fault for not implementing some kind of system. We don't have a timer up on the screen. Can someone just confirm to me, if I do a thumbs up, can anyone see that on the big screen? You can. Okay, so that's gonna be.
I'm sorry, Amy. I interrupted you. I see it on your screen. I have the slides up. I can change my view.
Okay, and my screen should be pinned, so that is how I'm gonna do one-minute warnings for everyone. Once you see a thumbs up come up on my camera, that's how you know. So my apologies, Christopher. Please begin.
No, that's fine. Thank you all very much. Christopher Cronin, Director of Public Works here in Andover. I will do my best to keep this brief, and I want to thank Adrian and Mayor Fuller because I think they touched upon the most important parts. The town of Andover, as you know, is a fairly wealthy community. We're very, very fortunate. And we work very hard to move towards electrification, not only in our vehicles, but also in our parks departments, our lawn mowers, our blower equipment, and we can go on and on. We work very diligently in our buildings through another department. Our concern, public works concern here, is the reality of what we can and what we cannot implement. And I fear that in a desire to move forward, clean air, which all of us want here, we all want clean air and water, that we're missing the bus, you know? Setting a goal that's unavailable is not meeting the goal by any means. And as a matter of fact, as you heard from Adrian and the mayor, it actually might be pushing us backwards. So as I, I'll speak as a past president of Mass Highway Association. And Andover is wealthy. Most of the communities in the Commonwealth are not wealthy. And we will be bankrupting many of these communities if we stop the ability of these folks from buying other items. You know, they can't pay for their schools as it is. They can't pay for their fire departments, police departments. And while I strongly commend you for the work you've done on this to date, having public session, and the willingness to recognize that we need to push this off for a year, I strongly suggest we push it off for longer because National Grid is in no position to bring power to the town of Andover for what we would need to keep our large vehicles running. We would be shutting them off every six hours. Amy, I see the thumbs up. Thank you all very much for listening to me.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And it looks like Tricia Yakavon Biagi might be back on. Tricia, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Since you are one of our elected members on the call today, we would like to give you an opportunity to go, and then we can go back to the panel via MMA.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for being here. I would like to, second or third at this point, many of the comments made already about the desire to have clean air and to use every available means at our disposal to do so, including converting our public vehicles to using electric power. However, out here in the hill towns of western Massachusetts, that is going to be a very, very tough thing for us to accomplish. So our highway chief had investigated doing this, and he was told that on, and in a 70-degree day on a full charge and flat terrain, which we have very little love out here, he could get about 250 miles of work done. If you add in the amount of power that a truck would need to go up and down hills with six inches of snow, it makes it almost impossible to get that work done in a comparable amount of time. And the other problem, as everyone else has mentioned, is the lack of the electrical infrastructure that would allow for charging at the degree that we would need and at the speed that we would need. So we don't have that out here. Even just trying to charge an electric car in some parts of western Massachusetts is quite challenging compared to in the eastern parts of the state. It would be next to impossible for us to do this in the next year. And I want to applaud Mr. Cronin for his comments about how difficult it would be for us to get the funds available to buy some of those vehicles, especially given what the mayor had said. So thank you all for what you're doing and for this opportunity to testify.
Great. Thank you very much. And I apologize. It does look like we have one more elected official on, but I'm not sure if you're saying you would like to testify. Sue Binnell, Chair of Wilberham Select Board. I can see in the chat you're saying you support the MMA and team's comments, but not sure if you yourself wanted to testify?
I had not planned to testify. I have two of the folks, both my DPW director and highway director, are queued up to speak as part of this group. Thanks so much.
Yeah, awesome. Just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Appreciate that.
Yep. So now we will get back to the Massachusetts Municipal Association panel. Looks like Mark Valenti, if you could state your name and your affiliation, and then you may begin.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mark Valenti. I'm the manager of operations for the Town of Lexington Department of Public Works. I've been in the public works arena since 2010, and prior to that, I was in the heavy civil contracting business for 15 years, building and repairing such infrastructure that I am now responsible for maintaining. I want to thank the DEP for what they do all day, every day, because it is what we need to do to keep the Commonwealth and Massachusetts environment clean and safe. That being said, I have had a lot of dialogue from private and public parties about the challenges that all municipalities face with more consideration to the impacts of this situation we're dealing with right now. The current model for the Commonwealth and all the municipalities inside it that we rely on contracted services to build, repair, and maintain all of our infrastructure. It's critical that the parties who develop such standards and laws that we are talking about today understand that there are many moving parts and layers when implementing such things like we're talking about today and the day-to-day operations of the public infrastructure industry. People who work in and around public infrastructure take a lot of pride and effort to keep the infrastructure functioning in a manner that the customer feels minimal impacts, customer meaning taxpayers. The amount of people and equipment involved to make sure that once we wake up in the morning and turn on the water, it flows all day till bedtime is massive. The same goes for maintaining roadways. We keep the traffic moving because it has to. Many people work all day, every day to minimize disruption as to how the state moves in and around it. Working in Lexington, we are always incorporating sustainable and environmentally friendly options to everything that we do. We are years into electrifying our fleet. We have performed a deep dive into what we could convert and have not deviated from that plan. We recognize which equipment could be converted without impacting the level of service to the taxpayers, and we have successfully converted non-essential line vehicles to electric. The Heavy Duty Omnibus and Advanced Clean Truck Regulations will create disruptions will create disruptions to the level of service for the taxpayers. Here are a few items to consider as we go down this path. The equipment replacement cost will double for all. When you incorporate infrastructure upgrades, it will triple. Lead times on support equipment like transformers are at least twenty-four months out. Electric service drops are undetermined. We've been waiting fifteen months for a service right now, and we have no ideas when it's gonna happen. Payload for construction materials will be reduced by about eight tons to account for the weight of batteries. Take for example, a truck hauling asphalt hauls twenty-six to thirty-five tons. That is a twenty-two to thirty percent reduction in payload, which will severely affect the time it takes to perform such work resulting in cost per ton to install the material. The same goes for any bulk material in the construction business, wood, concrete, steel, stone, gravel, sand, pipe, et cetera. Less payload and more working days from the limited battery life reduces production rates, extending contract timelines in business. All contracted services are affected by this. In Lexington, over eighty percent of our capital improvement budget, which is fourteen million, is contracted services. Contractors are not exempt from the Heavy Duty Omnibus Advanced Clean Truck Regulations. So it will take longer for us to perform the work with electric vehicles, and the battery life is just not there yet. We live in a climate where we have a construction season, which is about eight months. Weather drives this schedule. We cannot just add more time to get the work done. Take into consideration that a hundred percent of Chapter Ninety in all water and sewer infrastructure upgrades are directly affected by this. In addition, our operating budget will be affected by about ten percent, which is in the millions. We need to take into account that we are impacting a lot of layers here to this infrastructure. We're always on the cusp of innovation technology, and especially with respect to sustainability. We're always looking for ways to improve our operations in Lexington. So I strongly urge that the Heavy Duty Omnibus and Advanced Clean Truck Regulations be deferred for a period of at least five years in order for the three hundred and fifty-one communities and countless contractors who perform services for all public entities, develop a comprehensive plan to transition this technology with minimal disruption to the current of level of service to the taxpayers of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Mark. Next, from the same group, we also have Tanya Caparello.
Hello, my name is Tanya Caparello. I'm the DPW Director and the Town Engineer for the Town of Wilbraham. I've been here for about twenty-five years. I'm here to express my sincerest concerns about the impact that these regulations have already had on us, as well as what their, their impact they're gonna have on our ability to provide emergency response and daily services to the residents in Wilbraham, as well as the neighboring communities who use our roads and bridges every day. We currently have eight Class A trucks that serve as the foundation of our snow and ice removal operation, as well as our storm cleanup, wastewater and drinking water operations. Currently, two of these trucks are in need of replacement within the next year. Our Massachusetts dealer recently notified us that the current regulations prevent them from placing our order for new omnibus compliant trucks, as well as the regular configuration, despite the one-year delay on the enforcement that was put for cities and towns. They said that Massachusetts needs to delay the Advanced Clean Truck Regulation as well before they will order our trucks. Our truck dealer also told us that even if they ordered us a truck, there'd be about two plus years in delay to receive an omnibus compliant truck. There, there is only one engine that they can supply us, but the compatible transmission has a significant backlog. Our crews have heard about this and have become very unsettled, knowing that they are gonna be forced to drive older rundown trucks and not provided the safe trucks that they deserve. Fire and police have an exemption, and we're looking for the Public Works to also have the exemption, as you've heard from the other testimonies. We're in the front lines as well responding to emergencies, and our vehicles are critical. The snow removal operations isn't the only function. We unblock sewer mains, we maintain pump stations, repair water mains, repair fire hydrants, clean up storm debris, unblock culverts. Moving forward, we're looking for all the equipment used in these, these operations, as well as our plated off-road equipment, which is our loaders and front loaders, to be exempt. We did try to pursue purchasing an electric vehicle, and we're told by the manufacturers that they weren't available. We also know there's limitations in the, the power system to even supply the charging stations at our facility. The last point I'd like to make is our private sector is a team with us. Seventy percent of our work is done by the private sector. Costs are, are already very high. These regulations are going to increase in, increase in them significantly more.
Just a thirty-second warning, thank you.
Thank you. I really don't have an idea on how we're gonna prepare for this. We're at a time where we're feeling a bit panicked. There's chaos between our residents, our community officials, our vendors. We're looking for you to postpone these regulations until we have better answers on how we can move forward with this common goal of clean air, but we need a better plan for compliance without jeopardizing the safety of our public and our crews. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we're going to have Daniel Fitzgerald. Same thing, if you could state your name, any association you have, and then you can begin your testimony.
Sure, of course. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Daniel Fitzgerald. I serve as the Director of Advocacy in Massachusetts for the American Lung Association. So on behalf of the American Lung Association, I am here to, in opposition of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection's proposal to delay the Heavy Duty Low NOx Omnibus Rule by a year and provide unnecessary exemption carve-outs to the Advanced Clean Trucks or the ACT standard. We know that Massachusetts must reject the delay in weakening of these air quality standards, which hinder progress in reducing harmful air pollution. The Lung Associations Delivering Clean Air Report found that medium and heavy-duty trucks contribute to a whopping fifty-nine percent of ozone and particle-forming NOx emissions, despite making up just six percent of on-road vehicle emissions. The American Lung Association's 2024 State of the Air Report also found that more than one in three Massachusetts residents live in a county that received a C grade for high ozone pollution, meaning the air we breathe is harmful to our health. The health consequences of air pollution includes a wide range of things, including asthma attacks, heart attacks, lung and cardiovascular disease, and premature death. The successful and timely implementation of ACT and the Omnibus Rule are critical to reducing air pollution and improving the public's health. Also, our Delivering Clean Air Report found that transition to cleaner zero-emission trucks and clean energy could provide Massachusetts with approximately eleven billion dollars in public health benefit, including avoiding over a thousand premature deaths, nearly twenty-three thousand asthma attacks, and over a hundred and twenty-six thousand lost workdays over the coming decades. It's also important to note that clean vehicle standards are widely supported among voters. A recent poll from earlier this year found that seventy-two percent of Americans supported stronger standards on emissions from heavy-duty vehicles like tractor-trailers, buses, delivery vans by the EPA. We believe the extension of Omnibus Compliance and the carve-outs for snow removal in municipal or state street sweepers aren't unnecessary, given the significant flexibilities built into both of those rules already. These regulations have been adopted by many other states, two of which have the same or earlier start dates than Massachusetts. So we encourage you to reject this proposal and really prioritize public health by securing timely reductions in air pollution. We have provided written testimony alongside other health organizations, in addition to over a hundred medical providers in Massachusetts providing comment as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Great, thank you. And I do apologize. Next to Tanya Caparello's name, there's also a Bill Sparazza. And if you would like to testify, I do apologize for missing you there.
Great, thank you very much. Good afternoon. I'm Bill Sparazza. I'm Superintendent of Operations for the Town of Wilbraham Public Works Department. Like to thank you for making this amendment for snow plowing, snow removal, and also for providing the opportunity for comments. I have two items today. One is more of a question with regards to the registered off-road equipment that DPW is used for emergency response typically during weather events year-round. This would be an equipment such as front-end loaders, backcoast and rubber-tire excavators. Will we be able to purchase and register these pieces of equipment moving forward? Do they fall under the car-back rule? And we will not be able to register them at the RMV, that's a question. These are critical pieces of equipment to our emergency response operations. I'm also requesting that the Mass DEP consider including public works personnel under the category of first responder emergency personnel as part of the California Air Resources Board Act, especially in the context of regulations that impact emissions, reductions and environmental compliance. Public Works Personnel play a critical role in maintaining and restoring essential services, including infrastructure repair, traffic management, water and wastewater operations, and other crucial services during emergencies. Their work is essential during events such as natural disasters, public health emergencies, and infrastructure crises, where they often are on the front lines alongside first responders like firefighters, paramedics and law enforcement officers. By categorizing public works personnel as first responders or emergency personnel in CARB regulations, these essential workers would benefit from necessary exemptions or accommodations when it comes to certain regulatory requirements such as the Vehicle Emissions Standard, fuel use and equipment operation. This would ensure that public works agencies can respond effectively to emergencies without being hindered by compliance restrictions that could delay or disrupt our critical services. I respectfully request that Mass DEP give serious considerations to this request, recognizing the vital role public works personnel play in protecting public safety and welfare during times of crisis, ensuring that these workers are included under the appropriate regulatory categories, will support their ability to respond promptly and efficiently in emergencies, ultimately benefiting the communities they serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to have Michael Boynton speak. If you could state your name, affiliation, then you can begin your testimony.
Sure, thank you very much. I'm Michael Boynton, Town Manager here in Medway. This is my thirty-fifth year in local government in Massachusetts, starting as elected and now on the appointed side of the House, which aside from making me old, indicates that I've seen some amazing improvements, and thank you to DEP for not only today's hearing and your efforts, but thank you for the work that has been done for decades on improving diesel emissions throughout, not only the Commonwealth, but in every single city and town. I think it's important to note that the changes that were made prior to this in terms of the types of diesel emissions, the engines, et cetera, the technology, was done with a very measured approach. What we have here today is the potential of the law of unintended consequences. And make no mistake about it, the proposed asks here in terms of exempting public works vehicles and the potential overall delay in the program is indeed a public health and public safety issue. It's a public safety and public health crisis because the work that we do here at the local level in terms of responding to emergency needs is something that cannot be overlooked. Handling major snowstorms, and those of us that have seen snowstorms, not just a six-inch snowstorm, but something that's gotten a thirty-inch snowstorm range, blizzard conditions, the technology that's being proposed to be implemented just simply doesn't exist today, nor has it truly been tested in any type of real weather-related scenario like we have here in the Northeast. The inability for us to actually get to public people in need is a real fear and a real risk. And any type of rush in these regulations, let's say, has that law of unintended consequences where people truly will be harmed. We have snowstorm events that take up to thirty-six hours. You won't have the ability to stop and take your plow vehicles off, offline, off snow removal, and then charge them for an hour, two hours, three hours, whatever that technology is. If it's something like the fire apparatus that's being built nationwide right now, very small numbers, I might add, in terms of all-electric, each one of those are built with diesel power plants onboard to be able to take care of the situation when the batteries run deep. You've heard the comments about infrastructure concerns. You've heard the comments about incredible cost upcharges. We're looking at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to replace a dump truck this year, a ten-year-old dump truck. To replace that, we're told it's a two-year build, so we're not sure about the actual availability of that truck, but that's a three hundred, that's a seven hundred thousand dollar upcharge when that time comes. The issue is real. We ask you to please consider the concerns of the communities. We understand and certainly respect the needs of the public health that are out there, and please understand we're doing that seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year now. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. We would request your support and no delay.
Great, thank you very much, Michael. And now pending other technical difficulties and everything, we should be going in order in the list in which people have written in the chat. So starting with Jordan Stutt. Again, everyone, you'll state your name and then your, any affiliation you have. And then if you see the thumbs up, that is your one-minute warning. Thank you, everyone.
Great, thanks a lot. Appreciate DEP holding this hearing. Grateful for the opportunity to testify. My name is Jordan Stutt. I'm the Senior Director for the Northeast Regional Office at Calstart, based here in Massachusetts. Calstart is a national nonprofit dedicated to advancing zero-emission vehicle and infrastructure technology. We've been working alongside our two hundred and eighty technology, government, industry and community partners for over thirty years to accelerate the commercialization and deployment of advanced technologies. I'd like to start by expressing my strong opposition to the delay in implementation of the Heavy Duty Omnibus Regulation. I know that others on the line here will speak more to the health impacts, so I will be focusing my comments on the state of the clean trucks market. We at Calstart maintain the Zero Emissions Technology Inventory Tool. It's publicly accessible. You can book up the Zeti Inventory. We track all of the zero-emission, medium and heavy-duty vehicles that are currently available in the market. Looking strictly here in North America, we are tracking two hundred and twenty-nine vehicles that folks can buy. Some of those will take a longer lead time to get to you, some are on the lots already. But importantly, that number is growing. Over the last few years, we've seen unprecedented investment in American manufacturing of electric trucks and batteries. And with that increased manufacturing capacity, we're going to see more vehicle options. We're also gonna see shorter lead times on those vehicles and lower prices. In addition to the vehicle availability, we know that policy is critical to creating a supportive environment for this transition to clean trucks. And up to this point, Massachusetts has been among the national leaders on that front by focusing on three pillars. First, incentives, like the More EV Trucks Program. I saw it was called out in the chat, but just wanna highlight it here. Municipalities are eligible to take advantage of the rebates provided through that More EV Trucks Program. There's also the Mass EVIT Program. There are utility make-ready incentives for the infrastructure work that needs to be done to support those chargers. And I know that Massachusetts has worked with municipalities and other fleets this year to secure additional federal funding. So there are a lot of opportunities to get funding to support this transition. Regulations are also key. We've seen in every jurisdiction that wants to move quickly, you need to have the combination of incentives and regulations, like the Heavy Duty Omnibus Rule and the Advanced Clean Trucks Rule. And third, where Mass has really been a leader is on the support programs, like the Mass Fleet Advisor Program, through which our team is working directly with fleets across Massachusetts at no cost to help them understand which of their vehicles are a good fit for electrification, where they can save money today, where they might be able to save money soon, and how to navigate those next steps. Municipal fleets also have access to very similar programs through National Grid and Eversource. And what we're seeing through that work is that while some use cases aren't ready for electrification today, many already are, and more will be next year. That mirrors the phase-in requirements of the HDO and the Advanced Clean Trucks Rule. This is not about a complete overhaul overnight. This is a gradual transition that we need to make. Together, the support programs, the incentives and regulations form three legs of a stool. It's sturdy with all those three things together. But changing and delaying regulations, just as they're about to go into effect, is akin to removing one leg of that stool, just as somebody's about to sit down. Not only does that delay signal acceptance of continued truck pollution in communities that have borne disproportionate pollution burden for far too long, it also creates uncertainty for those looking to work or invest in the clean truck industry in Massachusetts.
This is a thirty-second warning.
Thanks. This administration and the Massachusetts Legislature have made it clear that they want to make Massachusetts into a global climate tech hub. Securing the private investment necessary to achieve that vision will require ambitious, achievable and predictable regulations for clean transportation, like the Heavy Duty Omnibus Rule and the Advanced Clean Trucks Rule. I'll stop there. Thanks again for the opportunity to testify.
Of course, thank you, Jordan. Next, we have Christina Poidenis from CLF.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon to the Mass DEP staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Christina Poidenis with Conservation Law Foundation. And in order to decrease pollution, increase progress and address some of the damaging and disproportionate impacts of this delay, we recommend that Mass DEP develop an updated state-specific action plan for medium and heavy-duty vehicle decarbonization. In Massachusetts, between thirty-seven and forty-three percent of total emissions are from the transportation sector. Medium and heavy-duty vehicles make up nearly seven percent of vehicles in Massachusetts. However, medium and heavy-duty vehicles produce twenty percent of green- However, medium and heavy duty vehicles produce twenty percent of greenhouse gas emissions, forty percent of particulate matter and forty six percent of nitrogen oxides emissions from vehicle travel. We recommend that Mast D E P develop an action plan with priority actions and recommendations for regulatory and or statutory changes to implement the framework more effectively on the state and local levels. This includes engaging directly and regularly with organizations and environmental justice communities and other communities that are most impacted by diesel pollution. This would remove the barrier of the formal commentary process that many cannot engage in due to a lack of awareness, lack of technical resources or language differences. This also includes increasing air quality monitoring and mitigation in impacted communities. It is more important than ever that Mast D E P reaffirm its commitment to being part of the solution, not part of the problem when it comes to protecting residents and natural resources. The Union of Concerned Scientists estimates that a one year delay of the HDO rule will cost between three hundred and four hundred million dollars in public health impacts and contribute to around twenty deaths. We ask Mast D E P to work with the EPA to grant a waiver before an administration change. We would also ask Mast D E P to start looking to the next clean energy and climate plan due January first, twenty twenty eight and developing action plans. The prior version has been a beacon that has encouraged the rest of the state to come together to promote our plan and to protect our residents and our natural resources. And finally, at the very least, we ask that Mast D E P not add any additional delays. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, next we have Anna Van Der Speck. If you could state your name affiliation, then you begin, you can begin your testimony.
Thank you very much. Um, my name is Anna Van Der Speck and I am the Electric Vehicle Program Director at Green Energy Consumers Alliance, a local nonprofit organization. And I'm speaking today to urge Mast D E P to not further delay or weaken implementation of the advanced clean trucks and heavy duty omnibus regulations. We support the regulations because they're key to our greenhouse gas reduction strategy per the clean energy and climate plans and all the public health reasons that speakers before me have mentioned. Um, but I want to focus my comments on the fact that I I do hear the concerns of the the folks that have spoken so far today, the municipalities. We all want to make sure that communities have the vehicles they need to meet the needs of the people who live here. And so to that end, I want to point to a couple of things. Um, ACT and HDO both regulate automakers. They do not regulate dealers and they do not regulate end consumers. Um, so implementing these regulations does not require any particular fleet to make any particular purchase in any particular year. It just increases the requirement of what vehicles manufacturers need to deliver. And that, as Jordan Stutt said earlier, that depends on vehicle class and it phases in over time. This does not mean that you cannot register of any type of vehicle, any particular vehicle at the R M V starting in twenty twenty five. And then secondly, I want to stress that there are flexibilities built into these regulations that were written in because the California Air Resources Board worked directly with automakers to make sure that those flexibilities would result in regulations that facilitate this transition, but also make compliance possible. So with those things in mind, I would really recommend that Mast D E P take seriously and further investigate these concerns that we're hearing about vehicle shortages or municipalities inability to purchase needed technology. Quite frankly, how much of that, this is, I think, a question that DEP should consider is how much of that is a tactic that the automakers are using to stoke up opposition to these regulations when they could make the choice to comply. So I would recommend DEP investigate that and also use its role on the Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Coordinating Council to really address these concerns about access to charging because those are real as well. And as has also been mentioned, there's lots of um programs from the utilities, DEP, federal government to move that forward as well. So in sum, I see the hand. Thank you for this opportunity to provide comment and I uh would also encourage you to not further delay or weaken these regulations.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, next it looks like we have James Nie. If you could state your name and the association, um, if any, then you can begin your testimony.
Hello. Thank you. Yes, my name is James Nie and I am the Administrator for the Metro West Regional Transit Authority. The only public transit authority in the state that both uses compressed natural gas, C N G, and does not own any diesel powered vehicles. As everyone knows, C N G engines are cleaner and better for the environment than diesel engines. The M W R T A is committed to delivering low and no emissions lighter than air fueled vehicles to the people of Metro West in order to reduce the harmful impacts of carbon and other particulate emissions. The M W R T A intends to transition to zero emissions within fifteen years. This will not be possible if the M W R T A is unable to procure C N G vehicles over the next few years. M W R T A appreciates any and all considerations by both Mast D E P and the state legislature to fully adopt all parts of the CARB standard, including the standard exemption for C N G buses for public transit providers allowed through the diesel engine exemption addendum within the CARB standard, which the CARB staff has directly confirmed exists within the regulations. To date, while the diesel engine exemption has been approved, the cleaner than diesel C N G exemption for public transit providers has not been adopted in Massachusetts. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, next we have Chuck Latmus. If you could state your name, any affiliation, and then you can begin your testimony. Okay, I'm not seeing Chuck um in the chat anymore. I will call his name later and then we can see um if he jumps back on. So next up would be John Picking. From Ballard Trucks. Okay, same thing. We will check back with that name as well. Um, next up we have Abigail Dehamel.
Hi, um, I'm just here as a spectator today. I'm not here to speak on this, but thank you though. I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Just wanted to double check. Just want to make sure we hit everyone. Um, okay, the next up, it looks like we have Mark Valenti from the town of Lexington.
Mark already testified as part of the MMA panel. Thanks, Amy.
Oh, yep. Okay, he is one of the people who put his name in just to make sure we didn't miss. Perfect. Uh, we had Tricia go already. So Brian Buckley from Ballard Truck Centers?
I had not planned on testifying, but I would like to put my support to a delay. Um, there's been several people talk about how this situation is between state and the manufacturers, the dealers are not uh required to sell a certain amount and customers are not required to buy a certain amount. Um, that is false because all manufacturer sales go through a dealer that are eventually bought by an end user. So people are slicing and dicing words to make them work for themselves. Fact of the matter is, we don't have demand for electric vehicles. The infrastructure does not exist for it. Um, the range and the application of these vehicles does not exist for general operation across ninety nine percent of the industries we service. I cannot stress hard enough how much we would ask for a two year delay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, and I can see in the chat, some people did write testify next to their name. Others did not, which is why I am running through each name just so that we make sure we check them. Obviously, if you would not like to testify, if you could just speak up and let us know, that would be great. Um, so next then we have Mark Malloy.
I will not be testifying today, but on behalf of a variety of clients, we'll be submitting written testimony. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mark. Um, I then have Steven Dodge.
Uh, yes, not testifying.
Great. Thank you. Um, I have uh Christopher Doherty um commenting that Doherty RV Consulting LLC was here. Not sure if you're looking to testify as well. Okay, we can jump back to him just in case. Um, next up I have Brian White from the town of Burlington. Okay, um, after that, we have Jennifer Pedersen from Mass Waterworks Association.
Thank you. Um, Jennifer Peterson, I'm the Executive Director of Mass Waterworks Association. Uh, Mass Waterworks is a nonprofit organization representing the public water systems in the Commonwealth. And I just want to echo the comments made by MMA here today. We support all of those. In addition, um, really want to make sure that public water systems are considered emergency respond responders and for the purposes of your exemption within the regulations that that be noted. Our members also, you know, fall under that public works department uh concept that that folks spoke about earlier. So there are obviously wastewater and stormwater interests as well that that also need that emergency designation. So I just want to definitely reinforce that. Um, we are very supportive of the at least two year delay in the implementation of this rule. Um, in fact, in a couple of weeks ago, we had a a conversation about trying to have a presentation um for our membership about electrification of vehicles. And when we met with a a vendor to talk about that, the vehicles that are um mainly what our public water systems drive weren't part of their fleet of offerings. And so you know, we, we didn't end up moving forward that presentation because there wasn't anything to really talk about in the realm of these um medium duty trucks that are so often used by our public water systems. So we are supportive of the delay. Um, in addition to, you know, the concerns about the ability of these vehicles to um to work throughout the entirety of an emergency response. There are also issues around um mechanics to work on these vehicles and uh and obviously the charging infrastructure. So we would support uh the delay being requested by others and um thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Um, and I did just get direction. I am not going to call on people who did not write testify next to their name. However, if you're following the chat and you meant to write that you would like to testify, please speak up or send me a direct message and we will make sure that we also get you included in there. Um, okay, next we have Kevin Sheen.
Hello. Thank you so much. Um, thank you to Mast D E P for the opportunity to comment. My name is Kevin Shannon. I'm a policy analyst with the Union of Concerned Scientists. And I'm giving comments on behalf of our over thirteen thousand supporters in Massachusetts who backed science based advocacy for a sustainable, healthy and just future. And so I join you all today with significant concerns regarding the proposal to delay implementation of the heavy duty omnibus, Low Nox Omnibus. Um, pollution from trucks is no trivial matter. Uh, medium and heavy duty vehicles represent just over seven percent of the vehicles in Massachusetts. Um, but as Christina ha- from CLF has mentioned, um, they contribute a disproportionate amount of toxic air pollution that really hurts our our hearts and lungs. Um, and I just want to start off with to make clear that the after treatment and engine technologies used to meet the Low Nox um omnibus engine standards, they are already available at a minimal cost. And so, for instance, Packer's thirteen L engine, Volvo's D thirteen engine and Cummins as as well has said that they are on track for additional medium and heavy duty fif- twenty to fifty milligram engine families in twenty twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven. Um, in addition, already in California, manufacturers have already accumulated excess Low Nox Omnibus credits as well as advanced clean truck rule credits. And so uh what's what's what we see as really happening is that truck ma- truck makers have manufactured a crisis that by holding back and creating arbitrary quotas for these lifesaving technologies, this maximizes the pain felt by dealers and in the end price gouges for trucks that they do sell compared to other vehicles um in other markets such as Europe. In the end, this fully ignores the rule's many compliance flexibilities, such as the ability to bank and trade credits across years and things like that. Ultimately, as well, just to reiterate, fleets are not required to purchase anything here and in the end manufacturers are required to make sure that their technologies are available and that like they are the ones who are held accountable um if they if they do not do this. And so I I just want to bring up a couple of other points is that our analysis shows that delaying HDO in Massachusetts by just one year would have serious health consequences. The additional exposure to toxic air pollution resulting from a delay is estimated to result in up to twenty five avoidable premature deaths and um around three hundred to four hundred million dollars of public health costs statewide um with just one year of delay. And so, and also while this pollution affects everyone in Massachusetts, communities historically and disproportionately impacted by truck pollution pay the highest price. Um, on the other hand, our research shows that maintaining vital regulations like the heavy duty omnibus and the advanced advanced clean trucks rule will result in over seven billion dollars in net societal benefits in Massachusetts through twenty fifty. Already on the electric trucks front, over eight point six percent of medium heavy duty vehicles registered in Massachusetts are zero emissions. And so given these significant impacts and generous flexibilities in the rule, we urge you to stay course um with heavy duty omnibus implementation for twenty twenty five and not delay. Thanks so much and thank you for your work on this crucial rule.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Um, next up we have David Melly.
Thanks so much, Amy. My name is David Melly. I'm the Legislative Director for the Environmental League of Massachusetts. Uh, I will try my very best not to repeat what what other folks have said and E L M has coordinated a letter with fifteen environmental uh and E J, climate, public health organizations that will submit as as written testimony as well. I do really want to hit on something that that Kevin mentioned, um, that's just so critical to understand about this. And we talk about the costs of complying with with these regulations um and and the costs of delays. We're not talking about something costing more. We're just shifting costs onto communities that have already disproportionately borne the brunt of climate inaction. And particularly when we talk about the avoided public health costs of reducing emissions in the transportation sector, it's it's not a zero sum game here. We are, we are investing in healthier communities. Uh, like I said, we've, we've written a letter where we want to really both express our opposition to delaying the current rule, but also understanding that more delays are just doubling down on the problems that we're having versus offering solutions. There are common sense steps that the administration, that the department, that policymakers like the legislature can take to address these concerns, you know, particularly when we think about our municipal partners, they're really voicing, um, you know, a desire to comply with these goals, but also challenges in line with them. So there's a lot more we can be doing. Um, we can identify, increase the air quality monitoring in highly impacted communities. We can assess and development a plan for the charging needs for these vehicles, making recommendations to where we can deploy them to support this new equipment. We can provide support to municipalities who are facing these cost challenges, these uncertainty procurement delays with manufacturers. And also we can develop a state specific plan for medium and heavy duty vehicles. There was a multi-state effort done undertaken in twenty twenty two. It would be great to see Massachusetts really step up and and take the lead as a state. You know, we know that this is not going to be easy. We know that this is going to cost some upfront money, but there's also a real value to investing and supporting the municipalities that are trying to make this conversion to supporting everybody who's trying to convert their fleets over to zero emission options. We know that the administration has done a lot of work with partners to to address these concerns. Um, but there's more we can be doing. Uh, and we look forward to seeing what the next steps DEP is going to take. So we don't end up in the same situation a year from now. We can spend the next twelve months really working towards addressing the barriers to compliance and ensuring that that we don't face them this time next year. So thanks so much.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, next up we have Mary Ellen DeFrias.
Hi, uh, my name is Mary Ellen DeFrias. I am the Administrator at the Greater Attleboro Taunton Regional Transit Authority. Um, and I guess I'm looking for two things here. One would be clarification on what the transit agency exemption is. Um, just for context, currently there are only two bus manufacturers in the country. And so um the difficulty of getting electric vehicles is difficult. Uh, in the other smaller van manufacturers do not have a waiver through Buy America. So federally I cannot purchase those vehicles unless I use all state money, which we don't have a significant amount of. Um, we also don't have the infrastructure in place right now, so I do not have the ability to charge these buses. I have eight right now, which is my total capacity for electric buses. I can't expand that fleet any further. Uh, and then finally, the reason we're asking for the clarification is that currently it's a twenty four month lead time. And based on CARB, Cummings will not allow us to put in an order for a bus with a diesel engine at all if it is outside of the timeframe. So we need to make sure that it's very clear uh what that timeframe is, or else we won't be able to order buses. And the result of that could potentially be lose. And the result of that could potentially be losing service across the state if we can't get electric buses and we can't purchase diesel buses. So on behalf of many of the RTAs across the state, we would just like to make sure that the transit exemption covers us for a significant period of time out. I know California, it's pretty indefinite. They have not run into this problem. They carved out a very nice transit exemption right from the start, understanding that getting the electric buses is a huge challenge. And as we have fewer and fewer manufacturers of these buses, the challenge does become greater. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And unfortunately, the department doesn't have any answers to those specific questions right now. But thank you very much for your comments. Obviously, all things we are taking under consideration. So very much appreciated. Thank you. Awesome. Next up, we have, and I apologize, I just went out of the chat for one second. So that was Mary Ellen. So next up, we have Mark Scribner. But actually, Mark did not write next to his name that he would like to testify, so I am going to skip that.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Great. Next we have from the Sierra Club, Sarah Kream.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Kream. I'm a staff attorney with the Sierra Club, representing nearly 20,000 members in Massachusetts. Sierra Club urges the Healy Administration not to delay implementation of the heavy duty omnibus rule as recently adopted by emergency regulation. Sierra Club further urges the Healy Administration not to delay implementation of the advanced clean trucks rule as some speakers have suggested today. Massachusetts must continue to show strong leadership in regulating air and climate pollution from medium and heavy duty vehicles, especially now as we expect attacks on environmental regulation at the federal level. The heavy duty omnibus and advanced clean trucks rules are an important tool to combat climate change and to improve air quality for all Massachusetts residents, but especially those in our most pollution burdened communities. Regulations, regulation of emissions from medium and heavy duty vehicles is a public health imperative. And both the HDO, heavy duty omnibus and advanced clean trucks rule will serve a critical purpose in that regard. As you've already heard today, in Massachusetts, medium and heavy duty vehicles make up a small percentage of on-road vehicles, but are responsible for a huge percentage of emissions and pollution from those vehicles, from, from the transportation sector. And the heavy duty omnibus rule would serve to strengthen NOx and particulate matter controls, which would lead to significant real world public health benefits in the state. Diesel pollution is linked to respiratory illnesses and premature deaths. The public health impacts of NOx include lung infections, breathing problems for those with asthma and COPD. And fine particulate matter contributes to early death from heart attacks and strokes, as well as lung cancer, reproductive and developmental harm and dementia. This pollution is concentrated in communities disproportionately burdened by transportation pollution. Low income communities and communities of color bear an unfair burden of medium and heavy duty truck pollution, having suffered generations of systematic marginalization that forces frontline communities to live closer to warehouses, transit centers and highways. The, the costs of this public health problem are huge for Massachusetts, not to mention the astronomical costs of unabated climate change. And a one-year delay means an additional year of toxic pollution harming Massachusetts residents and contributing to poor health outcomes, especially in our environmental justice communities. Sierra Club urges the Healy Administration to continue to be a champion for improving our air quality, avoiding the worst impacts of climate change and protecting our most impacted communities. The Healy Administration must do its job to regulate medium and heavy duty vehicles and should not abdicate that responsibility by delaying the heavy duty omnibus or the ACT rule. There are flexibilities built into these rules, as we've already heard, and millions of dollars of funding available from the federal and state level. And we do need to help municipalities and towns help bring these rules into effect. But that does not mean we should delay implementation of the rules. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, and I, this is more just to check, Christopher Cronin, I know you already testified as a part of the panel. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't also want to testify in a different or with a different association or anything. I see your name twice in here.
Well, I, thank you very much. I entered it individually and then MMA put it in. I appreciate it.
Okay, of course. Absolutely. Next for testifying, it looks like we have one second, everyone. We have lots of repeats, which is great. I'm glad we're not missing anyone. You had Sugo already. Michael Ferrante?
Yes, thank you, Amy. Appreciate that. Pardon my lack of camera today. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, it's perfect. Thank you, Michael.
Thanks so much. My, my name is Michael Ferrante. I'm President of the Massachusetts Energy Marketers Association. We represent hundreds of heating oil, propane and renewable liquid biofuel companies across the state. Collectively, our members provide heating fuels to over 900,000 residential and commercial customers in the Commonwealth. And these companies rely on the use of medium to heavy duty trucks to ensure their customers are safe and warm throughout the year. So we support many of the comments made already today and much of which we've sent in writing to Mass DEP along with Trucking Association of Massachusetts and nearly 50 other trade associations and groups regarding the implementation of this rule. And we're calling for a two-year delay as well to 2027. Our association steadfastly supports reducing, reducing emissions from on-road vehicles. And many of our members actually are already doing so with renewable diesel fuel to power their delivery vehicles. But Mass DEP's intention to implement the HDO and act regs is coming at a time when technology and infrastructure have simply not kept pace with well-intentioned regulations. As been stated, there will be few, if any, zero emission compliant medium and heavy duty trucks available for 2026, as well as, as the opt-in states and other end users, including Mass, compete for these vehicles. And also very important, the electric grid today, for example, is using 50%, 52% natural gas and only 6% renewables to provide power to our entire state. Along with the paucity of charging stations capable of recharging these vehicles proves that Massachusetts is not ready for the added electric load that the HDO and act rules will pursue. One thing that has not been mentioned, which is of a major concern to us, is that our association is genuinely concerned about the lack of testing on the hazards of using electric batteries in medium to heavy duty vehicles that transport both flammable and combustible products. So with that said, thank you for the opportunity to testify. We appreciate the time.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. And it looks like next up, we have Joseph Nolan. If you could state your name, any association you have, and then you can begin your testimony. Joseph, are you there? I, I know you're someone who specifically reached out to me to testify, so I just want to make sure we don't miss you.
Yeah, I just needed to unmute myself. I didn't know whether you were unmuting or not. My apologies. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Joseph Nolan and I'm the Executive Director of the Utility Contractors Association of New England, or UKAN. I'm testing in support of the DEP's emergency regulations and encouraging the agency to further delay the heavy duty omnibus, HDO and advanced clean truck rule acts until 2027. UKAN is an association comprised of some 250 members, mostly contractors, who perform utility work, approximately 90% of all water, public and structural work and electrical work is completed by UKAN members. In doing so, using a wide variety of medium and heavy duty trucks, ranging from vacuum trucks to tractor trailers and et cetera. I want to talk a little bit about common sense. All right. Everyone agrees that we want to reduce emissions. But these regulations as proposed are a clear example where well-intentioned regulations adopted in 2020 simply have not kept up with technology or, or infrastructure. The complexity of meeting both the HDO rules and the EPA rule of 2027, there'll be a few, if any, HDO compliant medium heavy duty trucks available. Take one of my members, right? They're buying a 250,000, $300,000 truck and already getting letters from the registry saying that they can't register it next year and trying to do business. We've, we've heard that the, the infrastructure for, from the grid might not support these kinds of activities. I've had my members, some who own 50, 100 vehicles, that, that do the, build the projects and keep clean water and clean energy throughout the Commonwealth going. And they're finding that grid can't for two, three, four years, give them the power in order necessary to support their fleets. And if they could get the vehicles and they could buy that power and we're committed to do so, they can't drive these electric vehicles across the Commonwealth. They can't get to where they need to go because there is no infrastructure charging structure in place. So it, it, it really is, that's why nobody's buying medium and heavy duty vehicle trucks. Realistically, there are no vocational medium and heavy duty electrical trucks. Even if there were, the limited capacity, limited range, exorbitant price of them make it unrealistic for private and public users. Another thing that's been cited often enough is that this isn't on the contractor. This is, this isn't, isn't on the buyer, it's on the dealer. Well, it's the buyers that can't get these vehicles that, that they're going to be forced to do what? What, what's going to happen is you're going to end up with a regulation way out over its skis ahead of technology. A policy that demands the sale or purchase of mid-side or heavy duty trucks that are not available to be operated on a charging network that does not exist, that cannot be supported by electric carriers. And as a result, lesser, clean, less safe vehicles remain on the roads, while the Commonwealth forgives tens of millions of dollars in sales and excise tax that it would have collected as buyers and dealers relocate out of state. You're going to have dirtier, I've, I've heard people cite that it's going to, you know, one year delay is going to cause X number of deaths or the X number of pollution. That, as a matter of fact, what's going to really happen is these 2010 trucks will be replaced by 96% cleaner to 2024 trucks that they're trying to buy right now, can't go on the road. So you're going to have older, less safe vehicles on the road for a longer period of time. So I would strongly request that while we thank this delay in the initial HDO rule and clearly, it's clearly not enough to address the problem today. I encourage the agency to further delay the heavy duty omnibus, HDO and advanced clean truck rules until 2027. We stand, UKAN stands ready to assist DEP in any way possible. And please do not hesitate to reach me. And finally, I'll just remind you that the carve out for plows and, and vac trucks and stuff like that, that's great for municipalities, makes sense. But didn't you hear several times that 80% of the work done by municipalities is by contractors? So the people that plow the streets off of 128 and off of, and the ramps off of the mass bike and all that are paid contractors. It will not be subject to this rule and not have vehicles to do it. So we're just looking for a little common sense, a little bit of delay, so this can get rolled out properly. We can all work to have clean air, clean water and everything going forward as we'd like to do. Thank you for letting me testify.
Great. Thank you very much, Joseph. And I do apologize, Sean Flynn. It looks like I missed your name in the chat. If you would like to state your name, any association you have, and then you can begin your testimony.
Yes, my name is Sean Flynn with Flynn's Truck Plaza in Massachusetts. First off, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to testify and thank you for all that you do for the environment. Thank you also for the one-year delay of the HDO rule. I would ask that both the HDO and the ACT be delayed at least until 2027, when the EPA and CARB will share a uniform standard. And I ask this for two main reasons. First, these rules will not reduce pollution. And secondly, they will decrease safety. Massachusetts really is a small state and there's really nothing that an out-of-state trucking company can't do that an in-state, can't do that an in-state trucking company is currently doing. I look outside my window right now, I see probably about 80, 90 trucks in my lot here. I don't see a single Massachusetts plate here. These are out-of-state trucking companies. They're the ones that haul the freight in. We do have a trucking industry in Massachusetts and they'll be impacted. But that freight will be brought over to all these other companies that aren't, aren't bound by any Massachusetts regulations. So pollution won't decrease. Massachusetts trucking companies that want to buy a newer low NOx engine, diesel engine, won't be able to. They won't be able to replace something like a pre-2000 engine. So they'll be forced to run the older trucks. We'll have more pollution. On safety, as Michael Ferrante had also mentioned, I'm very concerned about ZEV trucks, ZV straight trucks hauling heating oil. California doesn't have a heating oil industry. They have tractor trailers hauling hazmat loads. That ZEV tractor trailer can be pulled away from their hazmat load. Massachusetts has straight trucks delivering heat. We've seen them all in our neighborhoods. If that battery is connected to that, that 3,000 gallons of heating oil, it can't be disconnected. You can't pull it away. You can have a 5,000, 5,000 degree fire on their tractor that's connected to that heating oil. I'm just very concerned about the safety of that as well. And finally, I would probably just close with that. If, if ZEV vehicles were actually viable in Massachusetts and actually made sense economically and environmentally, a national grid would be using them all 100% right now, and I just don't see that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Jason Mathers.
Thanks, Amy. Jason Mathers, Environmental Defense Fund. Environmental Defense Fund is a leading global environmental organization. We have an office in Boston, which is where I'm based. I joined today in opposition to the DEP actions on heavy duty omnibus and ACT critical programs. I think I want to start on HDO and the critical reason why we need HDO. And that is to document the well, that's to address the well-documented significant gap between real world emission performance and the certification to the EPA 2010 standards for NOx emissions. You know, we all, you know, it is well documented that the vehicles that meet the 2010 emission standard have a lot more emissions at the low speed, urban driving operations around 25 miles per hour. In fact, you know, at, at speeds of this, at these speeds, vehicles have 25 times the certification limit for NOx emissions. And this is really the crux of why we need to, why we need heavy duty omnibus, right? We know NOx emissions leads to pediatric asthma. In Boston alone, there are 2,700 cases of pediatric asthma annually attributed to nitrous dioxide pollution. This is one in five of childhood asthma cases in the city. And this, of course, isn't just for Boston alone. Throughout Worcester, Springfield and Lawrence, up to one in four cases of pediatric asthma are attributed to nitrous dioxide pollution from transportation. Delaying the implementation of heavy duty omnibus undercuts the investments that manufacturers have made to be able to meet, to provide products in 2025 and rewards industry laggards. On the advanced clean truck rule, I just want to reiterate what we've talked about earlier as this being a gradual program. You know, we have 7% for the 2B and 3 and 7 and 8 markets and 2025 and 11% for the straight trucks. You know, we, you know, these are, you know, market percentages that could be met with vehicle class of, you know, vehicle use cases where electrification works today, right? Refuse trucks, box trucks, delivery trucks. And I also want to flag for this hearing the quote from the memo that the California Air Resources Board pulled in its market update where they were talking with the OEMs. And I'll just read this. Quote, "While OEMs are largely informing dealers and fleets that the ACT regulation is placing limits on the number of ICE vehicles which can't be delivered, they have alternatively confirmed with CARB that this is not the case." Right? End quote. And that is not the case largely because there are significant early action credits in California, right? We know that there's seven, at least 700 zero emission vehicles on the road in Massachusetts. So that will be generating early action credits for achieving the ACT in 2025. Lastly, I want to address affordability, right? More EV program provides up to $90,000 per vehicle. And federal tax credits provide up to $40,000 per vehicle, $100,000 for the installation of each private, private charging unit, right? And these, the federal ones are actually transferable for a non-taxable.
Just a third second warning.
Yeah, thank you for the here. Thank you. I'll wrap there.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Jason. Next up, it looks like we have Jim Blake.
Good, good afternoon. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I am a member of the Propane Gas Association of New England and a member of the Massachusetts Energy Marketers Association. Most importantly, I'm a resident of Danvers, Massachusetts and have lived in Massachusetts my entire life. And I'm here today to urge D E P and the state to at least delay the implementation of A C T two years, but, um, more importantly, to look at a carve-out or exemption for placarded vehicles such a, uh, and the reason for that is because F I M S A and, uh, all the other federal agencies that we have contacted have not done any research as far as, uh, electric-powered vehicles transporting hazardous materials of any type. This includes not only the fuels that we deliver to people's homes, but it also includes things like oxygen that transport to hospitals. Um, all the different, uh, products that are used in manufacturing throughout the state that are transported in placarded vehicles every day throughout the state. And the safety, we've reached out to the Fire Chiefs Associations, and they are, uh, in the process of putting together their concerns because there have been no construction standards set aside for the use of E Vs with placarded vehicles. So I urge you to create a carve-out or exemption for those. In addition, uh, on an economic side, if, uh, E Vs were adopted for the use in this and transporting these materials, it's going to require greater truck traffic due to reduced capacity of the vehicles. This is going to cause, uh, greater cost of transportation, increasing the consumer cost of goods that will get passed along to consumers. Not only that, it's going to create other issues because of increased vehicle traffic within the Commonwealth. So with that, I thank you very much for your time today, and, uh, hope we all get to the end with a cleaner environment in a sensible manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Um, next up, it looks like we have Mitch Girlnick. From New England, uh, Bus Association?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Sorry, I had a bit of a, bit of a time getting myself unmuted. I, I'm the executive director of New England Bus Association. Uh, I'm going to explain to you why we're an answer to this problem in a second. But, uh, our industry, just give me a little history, our industry suffered very badly during COVID. And it's still not, uh, not to the point where we were prior to COVID. And what do I mean by that? The infrastructure within our operators and owners is not there yet. They haven't been able to do vehicle replacements. They are just now starting to come out of that, uh, post-COVID, uh, conditions where they're able to buy stuff. But now they won't be able to buy anything. And, um, when I said to you, we're, uh, possible solution to your problem, we are the answer to one of the issues, and that's the issues of taking cars off the road. Every time a motor coach goes down the highway, it's taking anywhere between twenty-five and fifty cars off the road, and we're moving people around as necessary. Uh, without being able to, uh, purchase buses for the next two years, uh, when the government agency calls up for a natural disaster, it's very possible we're, we're going to have to say no because we just don't have the vehicles at that time. Uh, we do moving police and fire departments to all kinds of different situations, to funerals, or whatever. To give you an example right now, if a bus, if we got a call today from, let's say, Boston, and Boston wanted to go to New York City to a funeral for one of their comrades, we could not turn around and come back on a, uh, on it, on, on a, uh, full tank of, well, we couldn't come back, uh, with anything, uh, on an electric vehicle because the electric vehicles right now won't allow us the range to turn around and do a trip to New York. Um, we move the National Guard all the time, uh, to, to disasters or whatever. So all these things would not take place. Um, if, if we have to, you know, go with the electric program. Also, the, uh, uh, school trips would be greatly affected. So we appreciate, you know, uh, considering at least a two-year delay till we can get to the E P A standards for an engine, and then we can, uh, move on from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mitchell. Really appreciate that. Um, next up, we have John McGator.
Yes, hi. Um, I appreciate the time, uh, opportunity to speak here. I was not intending to testify, but having listened to, uh, the past hour and a half or so of testimonies, I figured I'd have to throw my two cents in, so I don't have a prepared one. But, um, I'm with J F Y Contracting. I've been with J F Y for over fifty years. So I've been through a lot of transitions with the company. Uh, I was very, very involved with D E P and the State House when we were doing the off-road, uh, pollution solutions of, uh, the mandates that were put in by Massachusetts. Uh, the point I want to make was, we made great headway with the E P, uh, the State House, and all the contractors were on board with the off-road emissions because we had available solutions at the time. I worked with U K A N and SEM, which is, you know, Construction Industries of Massachusetts. And, uh, again, as, uh, Joe had mentioned from U K A N, um, you know, the contractors as a whole are, are very proactive, but you have to have common sense. Back with the off-road, um, emissions, we had solutions available. We took tier-two, tier-three engines, um, and we outfitted them with diesel oxidation catalysts or, uh, diesel particulate filters. So that being said, the program moved along because the, uh, the available solution was there. And then the manufacturers kicked in with best available technology, going with tier-four interim, tier-four, and tier-four final. So it, it evolved into the very clean off-road, uh, off-road engines we have now. And the on-road engines had been a step ahead of off-road for, for years, so they were in a better place to begin with. So I guess the other point I want to make is by not having available solutions for us to move on with, it hinders the infrastructure work that we perform. And it also, as other people have said, keeps, um, higher, uh, emission, emission vehicles on the road longer because we cannot, uh, replace them with best available technology that's out there now. So that being said, I just would, uh, suggest that this get pushed till twenty twenty-seven, if possible.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, it looks like we have, um, potentially only one other commenter, but I will make sure we didn't miss anyone after this. Um, I have Paul Hilton.
And Amy will then go to the phones, if there's anybody on the phone.
Oh, yes, of course, of course. Yeah, so, um, at least in the chat, Paul Hilton from Cape Cod Collaborative.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. And, uh, Cape Cod Collaborative is a municipal entity supporting schools, um, with school bus transportation as well as other services. Uh, first and foremost, we want to ascertain if school buses are going to qualify with a transit exception. Uh, we absolutely would support, um, and explore, um, any viable pathway forward. However, uh, there are tens of thousands of s- school buses, uh, in Massachusetts, and failure is not an option. But the infrastructure and the capacity is not there, and, uh, where it is present, uh, it's not in sufficient quali- quantities or of sufficient quality to get the work done. So we'd absolutely support, um, working together to get a process forward for school transportation, um, but certainly exploring the options, uh, with D E P, um, to make a process move forward.
Hey, great. Thank you, Paul. Um, is there anyone else on camera who was not called on or who would like to testify? Hey, perfect. I'm not hearing anything. So, um, Sharon, it sounds like you said next we're going to see if we have anyone on the phone who would like to testify?
Yes, but I don't actually think I see anybody, uh, called in on the phone. So that's going to be a short list.
I agree. I guess then I will open it up one more time, just in case. Anyone else like to testify, whether you are on camera or on the phone? Okay. Um, Sharon, do I hand it back to you to wrap this up or?
Back, back to Don.
Yep, back to Don. Awesome. Thanks, Amy. Thank you so much. Um, just once again, wanted to, um, know if anybody, um, would like to testify one last time? Okay, great.
Excuse me, can I just add one more thing? Uh, I was just double-checking my notes. Uh, Mark Valenti, Towne of Lexington. Um, one thing that I definitely, excuse me, wanted to emphasize is, is that this is gonna create, we, we are not sure what the magnitude of disruption is to our level of service to the taxpayers. We can't quantify at this time what the level of disruption is because it affects every facet of what we do in public works. It, it's not just one, it's just not one division. It is across the board for us. And it's hard for us to quantify what kind of changes we have to make in order to keep the water flowing, keep the lights on, keep the roads safe, keep the trees off the road, hurricanes, microbursts, flooding, snowstorms, any emergency operation. Uh, this, this would put a major disruption into our reaction to keeping everyone on this call safe. Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you. Is anybody else? One last time? Do you need, do you want to testify?
Okay, great. Um, I want to thank everybody who testified today, as well as all those who attended this online hearing without testifying. Um, the testimony presented at this hearing or submitted by the comment deadline will be considered by the department before making the regulations permanent. Notice of the availability of the permanent regulations and the department's response to all relevant, relevant comments raised during the public comment period will be emailed to all parties who have participated in the public review process and will be available to other interested parties. There being no further testimony, I hereby close this online hearing at two forty-four P M on December ninth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.